The agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move.
I'll second the motion.
You got a motion to second the approved agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do want to mention a couple of things on the agenda. We had a couple of donations, one from the VFW auxiliary for $160 for cable TV over at the Veterans Service Officers. And the Holly Line Club also made a $500 donation to the K-9 program. So, thank you to those people for doing that. With that, we'll go into citizens to be heard. Is anybody online? Nobody online?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
We'll move on to approve of the payment of the bills and malcharges.
Does it move?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to second to pay the bills, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've got minutes from May 9th and May 16th.
Move approval.
Aye.
Okay, we got a motion to second to approve the bills from May 9th and the 16th. All in favor?
Aye.
First thing on the regular agenda is to request approval of the order six vehicles from Enterprise Leasing for 2024.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, thanks for having me here this morning. Here today to get the approval to order six patrol vehicles through Enterprise Leasing. We're still waiting to get our patrol vehicles that we ordered last year, but they're scheduled for production on Friday. So hopefully we'll be seeing those relatively soon. From the information I provided, you can see that per vehicle per month lease is $1,073. That's a much better number than what I was originally quoted for these vehicles. I was pretty persistent with Enterprise. They kept saying that they provided me with a price for the patrol vehicle and that number was significantly higher. Through my persistence, they determined that it was an error on their part and the number dropped by nearly $400. So, it's a lot better number than what I was originally quoted, thankfully. I did price out other vehicles just to ensure that we are getting that the Patrol Tahoe is comparable with others out there. And the Dodge Durango, after you price it out, is $42,410. And the Ford Explorer, after it's priced out, is about between $41,048 to $43,709. So, this price is right in there for the $42,400 for the Tahos.
Jim? Yes?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Sheriff, I know down here there are six vehicles that you're scheduled to either put to auction or if there's a better alternative for.
Right.
And I see that you show in there the internal fund balance available for those vehicles. Those are the vehicles that are being replaced with these leases, correct?
That is correct.
So, I guess what I'm getting at here is how are we changing our thought process within your budget? Typically, when we used to buy those vehicles, weren't you like on a three-year rotation?
Correct.
And so, when you look at those internal service fund balances on those vehicles, that's to tune of about $20,000 a year per vehicle that went into Internal Service Fund.
Correct.
Now, with the annual payment being $12,800, are you anticipating being able to reduce your investment into the Internal Service? Because we're not going to own those anymore. They're going to just automatically renew on an annual lease basis. Is that correct?
Correct. That's something that we would have to take a look into, but we also would have to ensure that there is adequate funding in there for equipment replacement, squad builds, things of that nature. And that's why that number is a little bit higher is because back in about 2018, we started adding the squad build figures and things into Internal Service and that was never added before. So that's why that is a little bit higher now per car.
Okay, so that's included, so all of the setup?
All the setup fee.
All the setup for your new vehicles are included then in the price of the vehicle to determine, under the old system?
Under the old system.
To determine how much should go into Internal Service?
Yep.
So there's a portion then of that, of that say $20,000 average per vehicle, there's a portion of that that's setup fee.
Setup fee.
So that's the portion then that you would still continue to contribute? Because when you get that lease, when we have an annual amount of $12,876 per year for those vehicles, that's not getting it set up, is that correct?
That's correct. That's just the lease of the vehicle itself.
Okay. So I guess what I'm getting at is it seems to me that I guess I don't want us to still be putting in $20,000 per vehicle a year into Internal Service Fund when, you know, $13,000 of it is going to the lease now.
Right.
We're just going to be building up.
Correct. I understand what you're saying. Yes, definitely, that's something that we're going to have to discuss now during our upcoming budget cycle with Lori.
So you'd have a lease payment line and that'd get higher, but your Internal Service Fund would be lower? It'd kind of wash out?
Yeah. And our lease payment comes out of Internal Service as well.
Oh, okay, it does get, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
These are built as police squads, aren't they, police package?
These are considered police package vehicles, yep.
And on the setup, is the screen and console for the communications equipment, the MDT and all that, is it interchangeable between the 21 and the 24s?
Some of it is interchangeable and we do reuse as much as we possibly can, but some is not interchangeable.
Just a request, kind of along Commissioner Campbell's thoughts. If we can get in future requests, an idea of setup and just show that as a separate item that we can merge in with the annual payment, that'll give us an idea of where we're standing on keeping the Internal Service Fund in balance.
Yeah, and it does obviously depend on the car. Like the K-9 car is so much more. I think our K-9 car for 2023 here is roughly set up between $15,000 to $18,000 because the cage is not interchangeable, things of that nature.
And the door opening and all that?
Yeah. Hopefully, one of these cars that we're replacing here in 2024 is one of the K-9 cars. So hopefully, all that stuff will be able to just transfer over.
Very good. Thank you.
Can I just have one follow-up? Thank you. So, do you have an estimate going to Commissioner Abingers? Do you have an estimate of what a cost of a setup is per vehicle?
For a patrol car, roughly, 12 to 14. For a transport car is roughly, you know, depending if we're able to keep all the equipment, that can be anywhere between $6,000 to $8,000.
$6,000 to $8,000.
Yep. It just depends on how much of the equipment we're able to keep, things of that nature.
Right, Paul?
And along the same line, so the cars that are going to auction, is that with the equipment in them? Are they?
No, they are stripped down. All the equipment does come out of them. These cars will either go to auction or Enterprises indicated they would take them and they would sell them. They feel that they'd be able to get maybe a little bit more for them because they have a larger market to sell them in.
Just to clarify, when they're either auctioned off or Enterprise auctions them, where does the money go?
That money goes back into Internal Service as well.
Okay. So we basically get the equity of these vehicles?
We do, yep. And we would do that as well with our lease vehicles that we currently have. Once that lease comes up, they turn around and sell them. And then whatever equity is into them, we get back.
Excellent.
I'm good.
Okay. Again. So we have any motion or?
I move this transaction be approved. I don't know if you call it a purchase, but.
Okay, we got a motion to second to approve the transaction to lease new vehicles. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Rhonda, you plan on replacing a social worker position. Boy, brought some help along. Must be a tough one.
Well, I'll handle this one and then Karen and Jamie are here for our second item.
Very good. Okay.
Blessed you with three items today. Okay, so the first item I had on the agenda is we did unfortunately receive an additional child protection specialist resignation in our ongoing child protection unit. She has been with us a little over a year and a half and has decided to stay home with her family. And so, we're excited for her to have that opportunity. So we are just asking the board to replace that social work position for our child protection unit and then to approve any backfill should there be internal interest. There is some revenue that is captured with these positions. They earn it based on their work and based on the eligibility of the family. So that does help offset some of the costs, but.
I'll make a motion to approve the request with a backfill.
Second.
We got a motion to second to approve the hiring. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well that would go into the next one. I request approval to hire two eligibility workers with state appropriation.
Yes, okay, thank you. So I have Jamie and Karen here with me today, our financial services supervisors for this topic. But I'll just kind of set the stage and then let them take over some of the talking points. I should also note that we did bring this topic to the PIC committee on May 16th and received support to bring this to the full board. So in your packet, I believe I attached several documents. But the bottom line is that, as you've heard us talk before, as an extension of the State Department of Human Services, we administer and process medical assistance applications. Since the, and folks that are on medical assistance generally pre-pandemic would have annual reviews. Starting in March of 2020, due to the COVID pandemic, DHS stopped those annual renewals and closures with the effort to make sure that individuals preserved their healthcare coverage through the pandemic. Starting in December, President Biden signed a federal spending bill requiring the states to return back to our standard medical assistance process, which means renewals. So the first group of folks that will have their medical assistance renewed are the folks that, starting in July 1 of 2023. So where's our state and our offices starting communication with that first group right now. As a result of these renewals, the state, as well as our governor, recognized that there's going to be quite a bit of impact on county staff as well as state staff. But county staff, in this case, in terms of making sure those renewals are complete, that we're outreach to families, that we're helping to inform them. You know, some individuals came on medical assistance during the pandemic, so they've never been through a renewal process. Some folks were on prior to the pandemic and they haven't had to renew for almost three years. So we're going to have an influx of work. We're going to have an influx of calls. We really want to make sure that folks that continue to be eligible for medical assistance remain eligible and we don't have gaps in their coverage. So fortunately, we did receive, the governor did in the legislature allocate some funds to counties to help address this issue. And I did attach in your packet what that looks like for Clay County. That allocation is based on our March of 2023 caseload. So you'll see on the spreadsheet, we have 17,682 individuals on Minnesota medical assistance. So our allocation would be 461,139. So the biggest piece to this is you need people, you need resources. We need trained staff in order to address the renewal process, work with our families. We have been struggling a bit in some of our other program areas, particularly our adult services. And I think when Jamie and Karen did their presentation to you, they shared with you some of the workload struggles in that area. So we intend to, our recommendation for two eligibility workers, those adult workers would be processing healthcare renewals. So with these two workers, we would help alleviate that piece from their workload, which would also help the workload for the adult team. So we're kind of fortunate that these funds came when they did so that we can kind of address some of the workload issues across the board. I believe in your packet is also a summary of what the cost would be per eligibility worker for two years, starting July 1 of 2023 and going through June 30 of 2025. That's $166,730. So again, looking at two eligibility workers, we would be requesting to use 333,460 of our 461,139 at this point. There is no, we will get the funds in a lump payment in July and there is no timeline to spend the funds, which is honestly kind of unheard of when you get an allocation from the State Department of Human Services. Usually, there's a lot of things tied to it in terms of timeframes. The caveat and obviously what we would do is that we're making sure we use the funds to address the healthcare renewal process.
Thank you. So Rhonda, you know, I look at this as though it's the state is offering an assistance to bring in extra people to help catch up. Is that kind of in a nutshell what's going on here? That your current workload wouldn't be able to do what they do now, plus all this going back and have to do what used to be done, but isn't it, right?
Correct, correct, in a nutshell.
So to me, that seems like they're supplying some funds to help a process to get that all done, so you're back to your normal process.
Correct.
So what happens in two years when now you've hired these people and everybody's caught up? What happens then?
Yeah. Well, I anticipated that question.
Well, I mean, you know, because it's something that.
Yeah, yeah. You know.
It seems like there's a specific time period for the purpose.
For sure. Yeah, it is difficult to know what things will look like in two years. That is why I would be requesting that we hire the two positions. Don't put the caveat on those positions that you are hired for two years. Because I think with attrition and turnover, our history has shown that we can continue to evaluate what that's looking like as we move through the renewal process. And as we come to you to fill positions that have become vacated due to just resignations or retirements, we could make that decision along the way in terms of what makes sense in the workload.
Good answer.
All right. Good.
Got that one out of the way.
I practiced that.
She was ready for that one.
Yeah, she was. I bet she knew who would ask it to.
No, it's real valid and we've had conversations, I've had conversations with counterparts in other counties and it's the same thing that, you know, the difficulty when you hire somebody under a grant and you say you have a job for two years, you see that churn, that uncertainty. And the training that's required. And so I think that with our attrition, and you've seen it kind of across the board with some of our programs, that there will be opportunities for us to constantly evaluate that.
And in fairness, you've always been really good in doing that in the past. I don't have any doubts about that, but I just wanted to hear it from you.
Thank you.
These renewals will come up every three years, you say, right?
No, renewals will happen every year, which is the current, which is kind of the pre-pandemic requirement. But now, for three years, we haven't been doing renewals. So the first group in July will have their renewals in August. So it'll go for a full year before we really get to everybody. Correct, or would? Yep.
Mr. Chair? Thank you. As noted, we did discuss this in the PIC committee. If you look at the packet provided, there are approximately 17,600 individuals, 682 individuals in Clay County who take part in this program and certainly appreciate the state for making available funds. That doesn't always happen with these issues. But because it is such a large percentage of our county population, really feel that this is positions that are warranted. And I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the request to utilize the allocation of 461,139.
Second.
We got a motion to second to approve the request. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
One follow-up question. So all of the all of the people in the past, prior to the pandemic, all of these workers in this area did do this work, correct? I mean, on an annual basis, the renewals?
Correct, yes.
Each worker might have had a set number of cases that they'd go through and renew. So all of the prior workers, this was part of their job performance?
Yes.
On a regular basis?
Yes. Yeah, we have three teams. We have an adult team, a family team, and a healthcare team. But some of those healthcare renewals, correct me if I'm wrong, did float through the other teams as well. But we have, we do have a primary team for healthcare.
As Commissioner Mojo mentioned, it's showing 17,000 in here and those 17,000 over the last three years, there's been no renewals done.
Correct. Well, yeah, all, correct, all of them, yeah.
That's correct, yeah.
So part of what this is, is, I mean, you couldn't possibly, it'd be very difficult for your current staff to go through and do these 17,000 renewals, right? Am I on the right page here? And so that's what this funding helps do, is to get caught up? Okay, let's clear that.
Jamie?
I was just going to mention too, that the caseload has increased from about? About 24%. We were at, let's see, we were at about 14,000 in March of 2020 and we're now at 17,682 March of 2023. So that caseload has increased. Statewide, the increase has been about 30%. Locally, we're at about 24%.
And a lot of that increased need could be because of the pandemic as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
If I could just make one more comment. I am wondering, we are still waiting for a bit of guidance from DHS as to how we would submit our funding plan. But in regards to the additional funding over and above the two positions, the other pieces we talked about is should there be a need for some overtime for our existing staff if we have a heavy month of renewals? We talked about that being perhaps a part of how we could use some of those additional funds as well as any technology needs that we might have when it comes to the renewals. Would you like us to come back as those issues arise? Or would you care to give us authority to develop that plan as we see appropriate? Or?
Yes, in my motion, I approved your request without a timeline. And I think you have the technology ask in there as well. We're approving the full allotment of funds. I feel like there's room in there to approve that.
I would agree. Right, I think you had that covered, the cost and impacts.
Thank you.
In other words, we trust you.
All right, thank you.
Hey, we got a motion with this authorization. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right.
You're not going to go away, are you?
No, I do have one more.
Okay.
All right, the third item I had on the agenda, and I apologize, I submitted this after your packet that already got out. I didn't have the. Cancelled. Thank you. Okay. And I need to just acknowledge I kind of messed up on the timeframe of this grant and it was actually due this past Friday. And in communication with them, they wanted us to submit it on Friday, but acknowledged that I was bringing this before the board today. And should, based on the board's wishes, desire to change the grant application in any way or rescind the grant application, they would accept that. So I apologize for not getting this before the submission deadline. This is really kind of a growing topic. It's regarding family resource centers. And in the information I handed out is just some bullet points that I'll talk through and then a high-level summary of what is a family resource center and what can they do for individuals in the community. So what I'm basically asking for today is approval to to allow the grant to be processed by Sawyer Family Foundation. And the grant application is really around assessment and planning and some development pieces of a family resource center for our county, particularly in Morehead. As you know, some of this conversation about family resource centers came up around the dialogue of a childcare center and Clay County Land Trust purchasing some land out in the Ramke Park area. And that whole idea from some of their needs assessments and their community canvassing is not only was that community interested in childcare services needed in that community, but they were really looking for community space, other space that could be used to, that the community could use, whether that be for, you know, community gardens, cooking, other kinds of youth activities, service providers that could come there to provide information and community resources to folks in the community. So that kind of started the conversation. Since then, Clay County Community Land Trust is continuing on their efforts with their funding and working through the potential development of a childcare center in the Ramke Park area. But since that time, some folks from the county, as well as other community partners, we've attended a couple presentations about family resource centers. What's the benefit of family resource centers? How are they developed? How do you engage the community to be a part of that? And so this grant application is an effort to kind of extend that conversation. And it's really, a good part of this application is focused on training our child protection, child welfare staff on what is, what are family resource centers? What can they do for the families that we serve primarily in our child protection, child welfare system? And the National, let's see, it's called the National Family Support Network is a network that has a tremendous amount of training that is available for states and communities nationwide to help understand how family resource centers, community resource centers can develop and how they can impact families and communities. As you may know, the Sawyer Family Foundation, they're out of St. Paul and their mission is to really invest in strengthening the well-being of children. And they really are focusing on children that are at risk of abuse and neglect, toxic community environments, trauma, and kids that are having difficulty with academic success. The Association of Minnesota Counties did receive some funding from the Sawyer Family Foundation for up to three years. And I don't know if any of you know Brenda Mahoney, but she was hired to do some work part-time in our state to try to work with counties and communities on getting us all up to speed about how can family resource centers benefit your communities. And so we've been communicating with her and kind of understanding what might be the possibilities out there. And from those conversations led to. And from those conversations led to encouragement to look at this Sawyer Family Foundation grant opportunity, to secure some, a small amount of funds to help us further the dialogue and to attend some training. So that's kind of the gist of the application. I did highlight in there, it really would be, there, there isn't an intent, at least on my part, that the county would own and operate and run a family resource center. The idea behind family resource centers is that it is really community-driven. It is really, what does that neighborhood see that they need? What, what services supports or other kinds of activities that they feel would help their neighborhood and their community? But this would be a grant opportunity to help us kind of lead along with a community organization. My proposal was to contract with Creating Community Consulting to help kind of lead this dialogue, to see where we can go with further development. Sawyer Family Foundation does offer grants beyond the assessment and planning phase, which then could be an opportunity for us. And in addition to that, in the governor's budget, in both the Senate and House, House bills, there were, there was some funding dedicated to the development of community resource centers. I've lost a little bit where that landed, so I've got to go back and see if that remained in, in our, in the budgets. But it's really kind of an emerging conversation. Otter Tail County actually just received a very similar grant from Sawyer Family Foundation, and they are in that assessment and planning phases as well. And I believe Norman County, I don't think they received the grant, but they actually have been using some of their ARPA money to develop this kind of idea in their community as well. So it's happening across our state. There's about seven, seven counties that are kind of working with their community partners to look at this as a, as a service in their communities. This would be one-year funding. The total amount that we were requesting is, what did I have in here? 58?
15,000.
58,650. Sorry. So the 35,000 would be contract with Community, Creating Community Consulting, and they would really kind of lead this effort in terms of ongoing engagement with community partners, identifying who might be core stakeholders. They would also be solidifying some of the already community assessments that have happened, but bring them all together so that we can look at really what, what has our community been saying? What have been the, the community assessments that have been done? What, what are, what are the pieces that are being highlighted in terms of the needs? And then more specifically, areas in our Morehead community that might be good options for canvassing those communities to identify what the needs might be? That'd be the 35,000. There was some money built into the grant for my time that would be, it's a little bit unique than some of the other things that I do, but would, would really be carving out a little bit of my time to be involved in some of these processes. $8,000 would be in the budget for having all of our child protection, child welfare staff, as well as some core community members, go through a two-day family strengthening standards certification training. It's a virtual training put on by the National Family Foundation. And so we built that into the grant as well. And then there's some funds in there for just some community engagement meetings and printing and marketing. And then when you go through the grant application, based on your budget, it fills in what they would be approving for you for the administration piece. And that would be time spent by our auditor staff, you know, going through that contracting piece and dispersing the funds. So that is what I have. I did, in the grant, you'll see under the cost or funding source, the grant was 58,650. But I did calculate for all of our child protection, child welfare staff to particularly go through the two-day training, based on kind of average salary, what would that cost be? And that is what I would just highlight would be in kind from county contribution for those staff to participate in that training. There's no commitment to the county in this application. It really is, you know, what might this look like? What, what, what are the community needs? What would, how would we engage our community and our core folks? The commitment, I think, from the county would really be recognition that we understand and want to do anything that we can that can help mitigate child protection, child welfare issues, particularly in neighborhoods that are, have high-risk factors for that. And that should a family resource center be developed and the community identify resources that the county already offers, that we would work to partner with how to make that, those resources available in a location separate from our county building.
Are we doing any of this work now?
You know, a family resource center is really a physical location in, in an area where a community identified a need and they've got services. Our staff go out to the community. They're out in these communities already. But this is really honing in on what does that community see that they need? And it's making it very accessible right in their community. A key piece to this, in my mind, is the school. The school has, would be a key partner in this because we've had various meetings about how to get some of the academic support, as well as the social service support into some of our communities. And that's a piece that I would really see being developed in this process.
All right, Paul.
So I have a couple other questions for you. But you mentioned school. Are you saying in a way of public education, Head Start, or all, or all the above?
All the above.
Okay.
Really?
Okay. And that's why I've kind of, I've seen a couple presentations on this and strongly support it. But your dialogue with Creating Community has been going on for a couple of years, right?
It has. About a year ago, the board approved an application to West Central Initiative for a $15,000 grant to really bring forward a childcare project. And that's, so we've been working with them over the last year, and the board approved $5,000 in ARPA money to go along with that. So we have been working with them over this last year. And really, some of this has kind of evolved through that work.
So it's, really, it just elevates that work that they're already, have been creating a foundation for.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, the other piece, are these grants to be made from counties? I know that's what we're doing here, but does Morehead apply for a grant, something like this? Or does, or is more of this piece through?
Um, you know, it's not required, counties aren't required to be the applicants, but county government 501(c)(3)'s
Okay.
would be appropriate.
So there may be potentially other resources toward this development? Or you see it mainly here?
Well, I would see, in terms of Sawyer Family Foundation, let's, let's say
Specific to them?
Yeah.
Got it.
Yep, yep. And let's say we go through this process and, and, you know, we identify a need. Yep, we really would like to see a family resource developed. This is where we'd like to see it. Part of this planning phase would be identifying where would be those other key partners and funders, and what would it look like? It could be as small or as big as that community determined would be appropriate.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, just an observation, I really like this. And one of the reasons, prior to coming here 17 years ago, I was in a place where we lost a lot of kids. And the systems that were set up were siloed. No one coordinated efforts. There was some redundancy, and there were some groups working against each other. And it was to the detriment of, of the schools, to the detriment of the community, and particularly the kids in underprivileged situations. I came here and we really did a lot of things right when I got here. Right now, between the fact that this community is going from a small city to a metropolitan area in its composition, we have a lot of new Americans that are coming in, there are things that need to be accommodated for them to be brought into the community. I don't want to see the siloed situations I've seen fail in other communities where nobody knows what the other side's doing. And this not only seems to address that specifically, but the county's position in this, as the overseer of a lot of state initiatives in child protection and child welfare, we have to be part of that community. And this addresses it. It gives our people training, and it gives them validity in interacting with everybody. So I, if I'm missing something, tell me, Rhonda, but this looks like, like an exceptional opportunity for us, and I hope we get it.
Yeah.
I think we need support it.
I'm, I'm very excited about it. In fact, we were, you have to be invited to apply, and we were invited to apply. So I think they have heard about some of the work that we've been doing in our community and are excited to see that move, move on. So thank you.
Yes, my concern would be, you know, you get 58,000, what if the work doesn't get done in the one year, or whatever, or whatever that 58, what happens the next year? You did mention something that you can apply for further grants, I guess, but uh
Yeah, yeah, and that would be part of the whole process. And there's always that risk when you apply for grants, you know, what happens when it's over? I think that with the emerging interest of our governor and our legislature, I think that we will see some state funds going toward the development of resource centers in our state. Sawyer Family Foundation has, you know, their history has been to provide some additional ongoing funding. Plus, I think that, you know, it behooves us to put forward a very compelling argument about how it, how it can help families in our community, and we can take that to other foundations and community organizations. And so I'm hopeful that resources will be out there as we move along.
Okay.
I have a question. Thank you. So curious, of the $58,000 that is requested in the grant, you allude to a contract to go through project management evaluation and neighborhood lead. Is that, you know, I, I know as we talked about this project area, and I think you've alluded to it a little bit in the presentation, there was a request for us for feasibility study funds. Will any of this percentage go towards fulfilling that $40,000 feasibility that was initially asked for?
No, that is separate. Yep, that's very separate from this piece. They were part and parcel in terms of some of the earlier conversation, because I think the conversation about the multi-use facility that the Clay County Land Trust was, was looking at was, the idea was, well, what if it, there was a childcare center and there was a family resource and some supported housing? So that conversation, at that point, those 40,000 would have been a part of that whole thing. But this is a very separate application, very much focused on the family resource center, so it would not be a part of that piece.
And I, I guess my other question is, you know, at, at what point is there a dollar threshold that you have to RFP for a contracting service?
Versus doing it ourselves?
Right. I, I mean, there, there's just questions on, you know, do, I just, with, with the funds, I'm curious, do we have to go through a process of hiring that contracting company?
In terms of RFP-ing it out and getting bids? Let's see.
From, I don't believe from a procurement, our procurement policy wouldn't dictate this to, to reach that level at this rate.
Okay.
Yeah, I was thinking it was higher than this. But, you know, it's, it's a good point, because typically, like we did with the homeless prevention funds, we did an RFP, we allowed community partners to respond. We did not look at it in this way. And I'll be honest, when I saw this grant application, and I knew the work that Creating Community Consulting was doing, I sent it to them saying, hey, let's look at this. And in all honesty, I thought that, in my mind, the original applicant was them. They, I, but because they're not a 501(c)(3), and recognition of the tie that this particular grant was making to child protection, child welfare, and the training of our staff, we realized the best applicant would be the county at this point. And so
Right. And I, you know, I'm not, my questions don't belittle the need, certainly within the community. And when I say community, it's not just Morehead, it's all of Clay County, really. And so, understanding that there's a need for this work, you know, I do struggle with a large percentage of what the total amount is going, going into a contract. Just personally.
Who's going to assess where this program is going? I mean, you give someone $58,000, who, who assesses it, whether they're doing something or not?
Well, I would be working, I think that's why a little bit of funds was built into the contract for my time, because I would be working closely with them on developing a plan, developing outcomes, developing activities, and reaching benchmarks along the way over the next year. So, and we certainly can kind of bring those benchmarks back to the board. I would see us establishing, part of the, in the grant application was establishing kind of a core group of folks that would come together, talk about, okay, how, where, what are our next steps forward? Some of the training is the next steps, because the National Family Foundation network can really give us some of the tools to help us, okay, where do you start? You know, how do you engage the community? How do you engage the appropriate stakeholders? Where do you start? And then what might your work plan look like?
Mr.?
Go ahead.
I'd like to do a follow-up to a couple of questions by Commissioner Mojo. In term, in terms of the contracting service, how do, how do we determine, are there multiple entities that can do this type of work? Or how do, how do we, how do we determine that we're maybe getting the best bang for the buck and maybe the most knowledgeable in, in regards to where this is going? That's my first question.
Yeah, part of it is, you know, just experience and history and knowledge about the work that's been done already in the past. And, you know, like any kind of, even if we were to issue it out as an RFP, there's knowledge we have about various providers in our community. And it is certainly not that Creating Community Consulting would be the only entity in our community that could do this work. There's certainly others. The, part of the grant application would be really working with resilient Morehead and inclusive Morehead, which is, represents 28, I think it was 28 or more community partners. So this is a broader, although we're working with them for their consultation services, and they're in, they're in those pieces, this is going to bring in a larger, much larger group of community partners in the planning process than, than them, if that makes sense.
Did, did you, did I hear you say, I, I guess I didn't hear you say, but you mentioned, and I don't know if you said that it is our intent, or it is not our intent to actually run one of these?
It wouldn't be my intent. I don't know that that's typically been the models out there. It's really, it's really mobilizing community and community partners and neighborhoods. And I, I think there's a multitude of ways that family resource centers are run. But I think it's community partners and various stakeholders at the table. It might be counties are involved in partnering and have some funding that they might want to
Well, I, we typically, we typically have the, the staff that's usually involved with those types of things in terms of the, you know, the, the public input. And this kind of goes to what both Commissioner Ebner and Commissioner Krabinoff mentioned was, it certainly is a, it's, and I, I think everybody, it's, it's kind of a, a very interesting concept in it. You know, it, it it, you know, it, but as Commissioner Krabunov asked the question, what are individual communities, you know, if they have, they have, and I think you mentioned, there might be certain neighborhoods that maybe have more of a need for this than others. And so, at what point does that local community themselves, what are they involved, and what is their investment into this? And I say that from the standpoint of, we have multiple cities throughout our county, and I, you know, I don't know if Clay County can be the great savior for all of these different things that might go on in different neighborhoods in every city. And I guess that's, I mean, we can, I think our role is to assist, right?
Yeah.
But I guess I'm, I really liked Paul's question there about, you know, and I understand we're in somewhat of an needs assessment phase on this, but at some point in time when there needs to be a broad partnership to do something like this.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You know, in terms, when you look at Clay County Social Services and the programs we administer, from all of the state and federal financial programs, all the way to adult protection, child protection, and everything in between, disability services, chemical health, mental health, our folks are out in the community. They are out in Clay County. They are out in the neighborhoods. You know, I think back to my child protection days, 25, almost 30 years ago, and we recognize the areas of highest need. And, you know, the idea of co-locating services to make it accessible for people and to make sure that we're designing those services in a way that best meet their needs isn't new. I mean, when we developed the family service center, the partnerships and the multitude of service providers that were in that building, the idea was, boy, families could come to our family service center and access a number of services that would be helpful to them. In a way, this is a bit like that, obviously smaller scale, but also neighborhood-driven in terms of what does that neighborhood need. Anecdotally, we can, I can give my opinion about what I think some of those things are. But in terms of our partnership, we, our staff are going out into those communities. It's based on a report that we get. And so, it probably is a little bit of a way of reframing a little bit of how we deliver the work that we already do. It might be, for example, maybe a disability worker going out in a half a day a week at a family resource center, providing information or resources to family about what, you know, what's available. Again, that would just be an example of how I would see us partnering with a family resource center, building those developmental assets and those resources to prevent child protection, child maltreatment reports, bringing in school officials to help families navigate the mail that they get that's challenging to decipher at times. I mean, we've had meetings over the number of years that I've been in the county where we've talked about how can we get some of these services out to those communities. So I think this just is an exciting opportunity, which does have some funds to help us hone in more on that plan and really realize, could something be developed? And it might be in the Ramke Park area, but we might decide two years later, there is a tremendous need in this area as well. And then how do we develop that?
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chair? Oh, sorry. What I'm hearing maybe is a little bit of a concern, having a district that's all in Morehead. I don't want anybody to think that I'm wanting the DEX Act. We have a mandate as a county to take the role that a lot of other states take of child protection and child welfare. And if we go, well, this is strictly a Morehead issue, which I don't think it is, then we are cutting, we're siloing ourselves again from being part of the process that takes place, because it is improperly perceived as only a Morehead problem. This looks to me, and Rhonda, correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like the lion's share of this is going to be spent training our people. And that's not something you lose. It's something, they get that training, they get the networking, they get to get out of their silo and work with other people in the county. Not only allows us to work with the people in Ramke Park that are trying to address their problems, but similar problems that might happen in Barnesville, or Glendon, or Dilworth, or Holly, as things emerge. So, again, I'm speaking in favor of this, but it's not because my district is in Morehead. It's because these are the people that service all of these needs in the county, and they should not only be at the table, but we should take advantage of the opportunity to train them on how this system works. So, again, I feel very comfortable with this, and I would like to make a motion to approve the grant application to the Sawyer Family Foundation for this grant.
No second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure something here is that my comments were not directed that this was just a Morehead issue. That's precisely what I was saying, is that this issue can be far more reaching than one neighborhood within the city of Morehead. That's precisely what I was saying. And, you know, it is our responsibility from a standpoint of child protection and child welfare, there's no question about that, and we do that to the best of our ability as it stands right now. You know, as this is, I see this as kind of a new opportunity to maybe strengthen neighborhoods that might see more significant issues. But again, it's something that needs to have a complete partnership and not the full and sole responsibility of Clay County government and Clay County government taxpayer dollars. That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Chair, and I just want to clarify, my questioning is, I get concerned about spending, if it's a $58,000 grant, $35,000 to contract with an agency that charges $250 an hour, when I feel like we have staff that do great work, and I'd like to maybe transition some of that towards more training for staff and a more broader look at, you know, the work that needs to be done. You know, I'm not going to argue about pockets of where the needs are. I certainly agree with all of that, but, you know, to spend so much of a potential grant, if awarded, on that contract is what I am concerned with.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just wanted to clarify the earlier question about procurement. As you recall, back in February, the board provided or approved an updated procurement policy. At that point, a contract other than highway, the procurement rate is $25,000 per department had $175,000. Anything over that would have to come to this board, with the understanding that at any point, any dollar amount, our procurement policy as the county board, at its option, can direct that a bid process be used for any contract, no matter the amount. Just wanted to bring that forward.
I was just gonna, sorry, I was just gonna calculate what we had looked at for an hourly rate, if you wouldn't mind me. I was just trying to do some quick math, and what we were calculating was 35,000, we were calculating, I believe it was about 13 hours a week. 13 hours a week for the staff at Creating Community Consulting, so 13 times 52 is 676 Was 5177 an hour was roughly how that had calculated, in terms of...
So does that get you a team?
Yeah, it was three people dedicated to it, not full-time, but it was three different people.
And does it identify who that is?
Pardon me?
Does that identify who the member is?
Yes. So we have, let me go through here. Find it here. Okay, so, separate from that, 35,000 was myself. Jenna Kaylee was going to be the neighborhood lead. Connie Adine from Ashara would be a representative, and then Karen Pfeiffer.
Thank you.
I was also just going to comment, you know, Reach and Holly is a little bit, what I would kind of identify as a community resource center in a way. The county does supply Reach with some funds annually, and they have a multitude of service providers that come there. They've had food, food support services there, they've had clothing, like a clothing place there as well. So, but obviously, this is not just a Morehead issue, and we have pockets of need throughout our county, but I just wanted to highlight, Reach is a little bit kind of structured in that community resource capacity as well.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, to approve this grant application to the Sawyer Family Foundation for assessment and development of a family resource center. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Oss?
Aye.
Okay, passes. Good luck on the program.
Thank you.
When might you know about the grant?
I am, I'm understanding that the turnaround time is fairly quickly, so I'm hoping within a few weeks.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay, if Justice is out there in the, yes, he is. Okay, we're going to talk about hiring a motor grader operator.
Yeah, good morning. So I'm requesting approval to hire a motor grader operator. This would be in the Georgetown district, and this opening is available because of a recent resignation. So I would also like to request backfill, as this position will be advertised internally for five days per the union contract.
Any questions or motions?
Some of...
Okay, we've got a motion to hire the motor grader operator. We have a second?
My motion would reflect backfill option as well.
Okay. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oss?
Yeah, and then the second item I have is the approval of the fiscal year '23 off-highway vehicle grant and aid contract with the DNR. So in November, the board approved a funding application and resolution, and this is for the ART Trail, which runs from Ullin to the Norman County line. And what this contract allows the county to do is to receive funds to maintain the five miles of the ART Trail. So it's just...
This is a yearly thing that we do, right?
Correct.
That's for five miles north of Ullin.
Yep.
I'll move, we approve the '23 off-highway vehicle DIA contract.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second, to approve the contract with DNR. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oss? Okay, go ahead with that.
Thank you.
All right. Request to purchase an electronic signature solution. Roy.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Morning, Commissioners. Today I come before you to request a formal, maybe more efficient, electronic signature solution for the county. This would be something like a DocuSign, the actual product is called Sign Now, but it would be one where we could create documents and electronically sign them for formal agreements, contracts, things like that. So this would replace the typical paper signed copy, email it, print it off, sign it, scan it back. So the request would be for $3,000 for 2,000 envelopes or documents per year to start with, and that's about half the price of the next option we were looking at. And this could be, it's a pool of documents, so this could be open to anybody in the county to use and share.
Okay.
So the request would be for approval of $3,000 for this year, and then subsequent years, that money could go into my budget, and I would just renew it out of the technology services budget.
Mr. Chair, thank you. This was discussed at the PIC committee meeting, certainly was something that's been identified past after we've gone through the pandemic in terms of how to streamline processes for all of our departments. Certainly, the dollars that you've identified will be well saved in terms of time for staff to sometimes track down those contracts and physically sign them, and really feel like this is a great solution going forward.
I'll go along with thinking if someone helps me get that thing done.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Okay, this is for approval for the order for electronic signature solution to Sign Now for countywide use. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, request to send out RFPs for county surveyor services.
Good morning.
Good morning there, Mark.
In 2015, Clay County decided to move away from having an appointed county surveyor to contracting for county surveyor services. The difference in that is how the work is basically controlled, contracted, and it was quite a bit of discussion at the time, and since that moment in time, it's worked very well for us. We've had really good success with that program. The firm that was awarded the contract and has been doing the work for us for the last seven years recently had some staff changes, and they are no longer able to do surveying in Minnesota, so they're no longer able to fulfill the contract. So we were formally notified that their, the contract is terminated. So I'm here today to say, we'd like to do this again. We're going to send out RFPs to the surveyors, we'll find a firm that, we'll review all the RFPs, and we've got a little group put together that's going to do that, it's going to be myself, our planner, our recorder, and our highway engineer. We'll sit down and look at the RFPs and figure out which firm best meets our needs, and then we'll come back here and talk to you about that. One of the, the company that does county surveyor services does a lot of different surveying-type things for different departments, highway and recorders and planning, whatever is needed. But the biggest project that is probably most visible is our section corner remonumentation project that we've been undertaking for quite some time. And I actually handed out a little picture of the county, if you look at that, where we're sitting right now today with our section corner remonumentation project. In Clay County, we have 4,676 total section corners. This was a lot of corners. But we've got, 1,500 of them are totally finished, they're done, they've been remonumented, and they're good to go. We've got another 1,200 of them that are recorded, but we don't have coordinates on them. The end of the line is we have 684 corners that are still totally unknown, and over the next years, we'll collect those. But what we've done with the program, as we've changed it over the years, is we've done really targeted areas. Specifically, we were targeting a very southeastern corner of our county, because we had some really poor control there, which made surveys more expensive for our citizens, it made our mapping less accurate. So what we did was, we've been targeting Egerton Park, Tansom, Humboldt, and Scree. We finished all of the control in those five townships at the end of 2022, which is pretty amazing. And then what we have done, actually, this year in 2023, we actually took four of those townships, Egerton Park, Tansom, and Humboldt, and we actually, since now we have really good control, so we know exactly where the section corners are, and all of our mapping is tied to those corners, actually, every land record is tied to those corners, we've redrawn the parcel maps in those four townships, so that they're tied to the new control, which is the ultimate goal, which is something we've been trying to get to for decades, so we have really high-quality control. We do have this already done in our cities, most of our cities, but we've never done it in the rural areas. This is something that we've been always just striving to do. So that is just, beginning actually of May is when we finally got that data ready, we're starting to put it, so people can see it. But it's been a really phenomenal program, I think it really saves us... I think it really saves us a lot of money, uh, long-term. Um, speaking of money, we, right now, we have about, we spend a little more than forty thousand dollars a year on section corner remonumentation. That fund for that are coming directly from the, um, Recorder's Compliance Fund. Remember a few weeks back when Kimberly was here? She set aside those dollars for us. Last year, she had some other funds that became available. We actually increased what we spent last year on section corner remonumentation from forty to sixty thousand. Um, and that worked well. We were able to use those funds. Um, these firms that we work with for the section corner remonumentation, traditionally, what they do is they do this work in the fall after they're done with our construction work. So it's kind of a quiet time for them. But for us, it doesn't really matter when they go out and do section corners. It's, it, so it's kind of a win-win kind of project. Um, one other thing I should note is, when it comes to remonumentation, there is a bill that went through the legislature this year called the Section Corner Remonumentation Grant Program. It passed, and it's awaiting the governor's signature. It has nine point seven million dollars in it for the, for one year, and there'll be a grant program where counties can apply for money to do some section corner remonumentation. If, uh, once they get that process figured out, of course, we'll apply for the grant. And if we get some money, we'll add that to our pot and collect more corners. So that's, that's the whole goal. So I mentioned a moment ago, we've got six hundred eighty-four totally unknown corners. They're just totally not, we don't know anything about them. Um, the rule of thumb is about eighteen hundred dollars to survey a section corner, which is, it depends on where it is. Some are more, some are less. I mean, if it's in the swamp, it's more, that kind of thing. Um, but at six hundred eighty-four corners at eighteen hundred dollars, that's, uh, one point two million dollars of work we still have to do. So I, I know, I've been asked before, are we about done? Well, no, we've got another many years. We'll just, but I think the process that we're doing right now with this, uh, contracted county land surveyor services and the targeted work that we're doing is working really well for us, and we just slowly keep nibbling away at it and making much better products. So after all, all those words, what I'm really asking is, I just want to be able to send this out to all the surveyors. Uh, we'll review the responses. Uh, we give them six weeks to respond. We'll come back probably August, I suppose, and we'll have some more.
Is this causing some people to, to losing land, gaining land, or?
No, it doesn't change what land they own, but what it may do is it may make it less expensive for them to have a survey done.
Okay.
So when they, as a landowner, have to have a survey done, if we've got a good quality section corner right there for them to use, then they don't have to spend a lot of extra money for that, and it saves them dollars, actually quite a bit.
All right, good, Paul.
But it could, uh, to Frank's question, it, it could change legal descriptions, could it not?
No, the legal description would not change. They're all tied to a corner, you know, whether it's a southwest corner or the quarter, or the, you know, so many hundred feet, all that stuff.
Yeah, that part.
That doesn't change. What changes is where the corner exactly is.
So I am curious. So, um, as we do this, I mean, now that we're in the, you know, twenty-first century, whatever, uh, is the technology in a place now that this seems to be what the technology we have? I mean, it shouldn't last forever. I hate to say it, because I, I think of, even in my time, I can think of two county surveyors.
Right.
And having done surveys out in the country, I mean, they had to re-identify, they were two feet off.
Yes.
And then we had to go seven miles this way to get a survey again.
No, that, that technology makes it a lot easier. And one of the things we require through this project with the section corner remonumentation is county coordinates for each of the corners. So we have very precise coordinates down to three decimal places of where that corner is. So the next time when they get there, they can verify that, yes, this is the same exact spot.
So then, from, when we do RFPs, so this, you know, for services, they're all following the same identical system that's consistent from this point on.
Exactly. So we're using the same coordinate system, the same corner, and all those corners are recorded in the recorder's office, and they're available online, so people can get to them, so they can look that information up and use it. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I guess what my concern was, say a farmer's been farming man for thirty, forty years.
Mm-hmm.
Now we find out the corner is fifty feet into his other land or whatever. I mean, is there eminent domain, I mean, is there domain that they?
No, we, we don't deal with any of that kind of stuff, as far as those kind of issues. All we're, all we're doing is establishing the control that's used for the surveys.
Okay.
The county doesn't get involved in that kind of stuff.
But, 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 and I think to all of the points, there are components of infringement that, yes, they technically didn't own the land and technically can't lose something if it wasn't theirs. But if they're farming, you know,
Right.
twenty feet over, there's going to be an aha moment between.
Yeah.
adjacent landowners.
Right of adverse possession and the whole legal system that deals with that stuff.
Yep.
It's not the county that does that.
Right.
We just keep the records.
Very good, okay. Any suggestions or motions or?
I'll make a motion, authorize the distribution of proposals for county surveyor services.
Second. We've got a motion, a second, to go ahead with the project, or to hire someone or whatever? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, request to approve of the development of a code study review committee. Matt?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So at the Planning Commission meeting last week, um, there was some discussion about kicking off our development code update and kind of assembling the team that was going to be, um, kind of tasked with overseeing the process, providing input and review. Uh, and so that, uh, the Planning Commission did make a recommendation to, um, for the Study Review Committee. And so Study Review Committee is consisting of two county commissioners. Obviously, you would, as the county commission, would, would decide who you would want to serve on that. The thinking was that Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Campbell, since they had served on the Study Review Committee for the comprehensive plan, um, that they would continue and serve on the Study Review Committee for the development code update. And then we have members of the Planning Commission, a member of the Board of Adjustment, and then county staff on there as well. And then, um, as, uh, different tasks come up that address different parts of the code, uh, there will be opportunities to bring in other folks, um, either county staff or, or, um, state, uh, state employees. Uh, I'm thinking in particular of like our shoreline and our floodplain. We'll want some, some state, uh, input on, on that and, and participation on, in, in those areas as well. So, um, looking at the three meetings of this Study Review Committee over the, the course of, uh, probably a twelve to fourteen month, um, update time, timeline. Uh, so not a huge commitment. Um, oh, yeah, but, yeah, three meetings, and then the, the cost impact would just be per diems, those meetings. Any questions for me at all?
Move for approval of the Code Update Study Review Committee.
I would ask, would we name the members then?
There, I think they're on the back.
Okay. That being Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo?
Yes.
Yeah. Second?
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, any further discussion of the committee members? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All righty.
Yep.
Okay, we've got, request to approve for a Wise Benefit Administration system. Darren and Anna.
Good morning.
That's why Darren dressed up today, huh?
I always get dressed up for the board.
Didn't notice that, I guess.
And I'm going to let, um, Anna drive this one, since she's, uh, the most knowledgeable one in this room on that stuff, so.
Go for it, Anna.
All right, good morning. So Darren and I are here this morning on behalf of the Insurance Committee. We have had one meeting thus far in twenty twenty-three and have another one this afternoon. But our last insurance committee, the committee unanimously voted to move forward with changing our ancillary benefits. So we currently have Colonial Life, who administers our short-term disability, our cancer, critical illness, and accident plan. So we would be looking, um, to move forward with changing that provider from Colonial to Madison National Life. With that change, then, we would receive a free, um, insurance benefit platform called Wise Benefit, which is what, um, would allow us to be paperless. It would allow us to have electronic enrollment, both as a new hire and open enrollment, and it would have EDI files, meaning that the, whatever benefits are either entered or changed in this electronic system would be automatically sent to the carriers. Right now, every change we have is manually entered or deleted change through the carrier. So we have six, or four hundred and fifty benefit-eligible employees. If all four hundred and fifty people make a change, that is four hundred and fifty-plus changes that I have to manually change with the carrier. So if you all would support the change from moving from Colonial Life to Madison National Life for our ancillary benefits, we would then receive Wise Benefits for free. Any questions?
Sounds like a good plan.
Uh, with our ancillary benefits, right now, we have about sixty employees that carry those policies. The employees would have the option to carry coverage through the new provider, or they can continue their current coverage at self-pay, and they could pay directly through the carrier if they wish to keep their current plan. We would argue, um, and negotiate with the carrier that the coverage would be identical or better, but some people like to keep their current policies, which would be acceptable.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion, a second, to approve the new system. Any further discussion? Then we hope you know more about this than we do, so.
I, I mean, the insurance committee went through this and agrees with this, so.
Very good, okay.
Perfect.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move into the recognition of proclamation for fire and emergency medical services appreciation day and National Emergency Medical Services Week.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. As this board, uh, most likely remembers, uh, each year, uh, the Clay County Board, in conjunction with our Intergovernmental Committee, uh, brings forward a proclamation to recognize the work of our fire and emergency medical services employees in our department, or, excuse me, in our county. Uh, we generally do this on the week, uh, this week of May twenty-first to the twenty-seventh is Emergency Medical Week, and the proclamation that we would be signing would be specifically today. Uh, if the board were to move forward with the proclamation, it would be signed off. Uh, and, uh, there will be a press conference this afternoon at two PM at the Dilworth, Dilworth Community Center and Fire Department. With that, I'd yield for, yield for any questions.
Okay, we've got the proclamation in front of us. Uh, we'd like to read that. Um, each commissioner will take one item, and we'll start with Kevin, please.
Okay, thank you. Whereas on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, Clay County citizens will unite in support of firefighters and emergency medical personnel nationwide to promote National Emergency Medical Services Week, and?
David?
Whereas citizens. Whereas citizens are urged to support firefighters and emergency medical technicians in a myriad of ways across Clay County, from sending a card of support to their local fire department or EMS agency, sharing a positive story on social media about emergency personnel, to thanking emergency personnel they come into contact with, and?
Whereas, emergency personnel play an integral part in Clay County by protecting and serving the community, and they deserve our report. Ann?
Whereas, the Clay County Intergovernmental Committee, which includes Moorhead Area Public Schools, Dilworth Glendon Felton Public Schools, the City of Moorhead, the City of Dilworth, and Clay County, is recognizing those in emergency services and the public service they provide to our communities, and?
And therefore, the Clay County Intergovernmental Committee do hereby proclaim, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, is Fire and Emergency Medical Services Appreciation Day. Further, let it be resolved that May twenty-second to the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, be proclaimed National Emergency Medical Services Week. And all citizens of Clay County are encouraged to wear red on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three in support of fire and emergency medical personnel. In witness thereof, whereof, we have here, unto set our hands and strongly sign as the representative of each agency of the Clay County Intergovernmental Committee this twenty-third day of May twenty-three.
Mr. Chair, move the proclamation.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion, a second. The only thing, I see no one's wearing red.
Well, I got the memo a little late.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can wear it this afternoon.
Yeah.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. And with that, we'll go into committee reports. Jenny, if you can start us out today.
Thank you, Commissioner Girls. Last week, I attended the pick committee with yourself, and we also, um, uh, really have already acted on the items that we discussed at that meeting. In the evening, I attended the Clay County Planning Commission meeting. We had four hearings. Uh, one was a request for an interim use gravel mining operation in Highland Grove Township. That application was approved. The second and third applications were all on the same parcel in Tansom Township. The first part of that was a interim use to continue a twenty-acre gravel mining operation that was approved. And then with that, allowed next interim use was a permit for a portable bituminous hot-mix plant. Uh, they typically use that on road projects locally, and we, and most municipalities, see quite a savings when they're able to set those up close. So that did pass. And then the last interim use was for an applicant that was seeking approval of a permit to place a second dwelling on a residential parcel in Park Township to take care of their, her aging parents, and that was also approved. And then we did discuss the, um, the Planning Committee that we acted on just now. Yesterday, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health, uh, Board. We had an executive committee meeting. We currently, um, just went into a new contract with an agency for streamlined financial reporting. Um, there are two different contracts with, uh, and one of the companies is having difficulty providing financial statements to the organization. Um, it appears as though there's some sort of buyout happening. Um, there's enough internal controls that we, um, feel comfortable about where everything's standing financially. We just haven't had those exact documents. It provides some concern, as Lakeland will be approaching all of the counties to discuss the county contracts and requests. Uh, we did, in the last few days, get confirmation that we will, um, have those documents when the, within the next two weeks, so not anticipating too much of a kickback or, um, delay. But certainly Lakeland wanted to have those in hand before having any discussions with the county. And then after that, had a full board meeting, lots of updates from the Moorhead site. If you haven't driven by the Lakeland Mental Health Clinic in South Moorhead, make sure and do so. It, um, is behind the old Safari Theater. Um, really exciting progress there that will be completed in October. Um, and there will be a space that they're contracting with TransM, which I believe is a transitional employment agency. Um, so really continuing the objective of connecting clients with as many community supports as possible. So excited about that. And then, uh, later on, I attended the Minnesota Rural Counties Caucus meeting. Huge updates as the legislative session reached a conclusion last night. Uh, so really, um, an onslaught of new bills to try to come to grasp with and how it will affect counties. And Capitol Hill has just done a fantastic job representing our interests at the Capitol, but also working with all of our other organizations, such as the Association of Minnesota Counties, to make sure that we have as much of a holistic effort for advocacy as possible. That concludes my reports.
Okay, Kevin?
Thank you. The only meeting that I had this last week was yesterday, and that was the, uh, DMV pre-design meeting that continues to move forward. I think we've gotten down to what, uh, what the inside of, of, uh, I think we've gotten down to what the inside of a new building or a new location would look like. If you recall, when we went into the Moritz Center Mall, we had a lease in there of 8,800 square feet is what we leased there. Our current design right now calls for, we've been able to really redesign some of that. There is some areas in there that I think that there's a little bit of space that's, especially on the backside of that, that there's more space there than really is needed. But we didn't have a choice in terms of the size. So anyway, we're looking at about 8,500 square feet for the county's needs. So it's actually down about, and that also includes the ability to expand. We are looking at a completely new way of delivering the services there, even more so than what the improvements were made at the DMV. So that's gonna be exciting to see that happen, and that's thanks to Chelsea and Lori's input on that. And there, the state of Minnesota has requested that we look at bringing them back in as a partner again in that project. And they're looking at the need of about 1,200 square feet. And for the people who are watching, the difference between that is the local, our DMV were responsible for license tabs and all those types of things, whereas the state of Minnesota does the testing. And they do the testing for new drivers and anybody who has to get a license, including CDL. And so whatever location we're looking at, we're gonna have to probably have the ability to have that area for semis, where they do testing for semis, and also for motorcycle testing as well as regular vehicle testing. So it's moving forward, and I think, you know, I think they're, based on the meeting yesterday, they're gonna be able to now start putting some numbers together in terms of what it would cost to build. And then we'll have some decisions to make, and that should be coming before the board soon. And one of the things that we've incorporated, and I know Commissioner Moser's brought this up a few times too, is in our discussions, and the frustration that we've seen within Clay County about the ability to have access to adequate testing so that our citizens don't have to move towards, you know, going out to Becker County or Bemidji or other places to have their tests done. So obviously, that is a decision that's ultimately made by the state of Minnesota. But we've been advocating for more local testing through this process. And that 1,200 square feet that is designed there would include space to have additional testing done here. So we'll continue to advocate on behalf of our citizens, especially as we grow as a county, that, you know, our citizens should not have to leave Clay County to take a driver's test. So we continue working on that, and we'll be bringing that forward.
Yeah, I was just gonna add to that, that the only thing is that they've got a contract where they're at till 2027. So it's tough to work with them right now. Go ahead, Dave. Oh, excuse me, were you done?
Yes, that's the only meeting I had.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 18th, I virtually attended the Clay County Suicide and Substance Prevention Coalition meeting. We had a presentation from Julie Dreyfolt from Colorado with an organization called One Chance to Grow Up. The emphasis was on the effect of legal marijuana that is impacting the youth of Colorado. Had some food for thought on this as we move into having to deal with legalized marijuana here. The legislation, I think, we're still a little bit unclear on how much financial return we'll get as local communities in our ability to not just enforce the rules, but actually penalize the rules. We need to have local control, and I don't see where we have the adequate legislation right now for that. But hopefully, it's something we'll be able to work through as this legislation is put in place. I then had a, my computer automatically updated and took me away from the meeting for about 10 or 12 minutes. But I missed Rory's update on the opioid funding, but I know that from conversations I've had, we are talking about partnering with Moorhead and looking at a more regional approach on using opioid funding. And I think that's, you know, for future discussions as it develops. Got some good news from the North Dakota State Legislature. They've increased the funding by $1.8 million for First Link. And First Link provides our 988 coverage in Clay County. So they are able to hire staff where they've had shortages up to this point, and are in the process of moving ahead with that. Later that day, I attended the CAP LP Senior Program Meeting at the Yum Com Center. They have a new director, Amanda Gonzalez, with CAP LP. They've not had a meeting in a while, so it was more get to know each other and introduce yourself on this. County staff was well represented. We discussed the upcoming Valley Triad event for May 31st at the Yum Com Center and some of the activities that the Moorhead Senior Center provides. Later that day, I attended the full board meeting, the Lake Agassy Regional Library Board, and started meeting off with some really good news. After a number of years of no increases in state funding for regional libraries and a disproportionate system of calculating, formula of calculating state funding that disadvantaged outstate library systems. All the legislation's been put forward for libraries in this session passed. We don't have an exact figure on what that's gonna mean for the Lake Agassy system as far as financial support. But these bills gave an immediate increase of $400 million to regional library systems. The formula adjustment will benefit outstate libraries, and it will be something that benefits them into the future because of the way the funding is determined. Again, part of that is population formula. Libraries know what the state will contribute. And at this point right now, the system they use tells us at the end of the year how much the state can contribute the following year. So you can't reliably do a budget because you don't know what you're gonna get from state funding. That's gonna be addressed with this new legislation, and there'll be an increase in legacy funding. Following that, we had a discussion on the second draft of the annual budget. Again, this is just a draft, but it looks like a 4.05% increase. Most of that is gonna be insurance and salaries, a little bit in, you know, new books and tapes, expanding that a little bit. That impact will be 2.6% to signatories. So it looks like about an $8,000 increase for Clay County in next year's contribution to the library system. Again, this is only a draft, and there was a fairly good discussion about, if we're getting more money from the state, does that mean that we need less from the signatories? We don't know, because we don't know what we're getting from the state yet. But I used the comparison that we have with West Central Juvenile, and I said, yep, at some point, that can come back to the signatories in reduced contribution. But first, let's determine what we need and what we're getting, and that can wait for the next budget cycle. I think everybody in, you know, the other representatives from all the other jurisdictions felt that was a fairly good plan, and that's probably how we're gonna proceed. Then had a meeting about the Endowment Fund, where we just voted to reinvest the smaller amounts of money that have come forward from that fund annually, reinvested into the fund. And that completed that meeting, and that completes my report.
Okay, Paul.
Thank you. On May 16th, last Tuesday, I had the monthly meeting of the Clay County Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council. We did, as a follow-up to the annual report given, we began working on our next steps for 2023. And that'll be a monthly process. We also had a very good presentation from one of our council members, that being presented by Tobias Wild. He talked about his work with the deaf and hard-of-hearing services that he's involved with. That runs under, he's actually hired by the Minnesota Department of Human Services. And just in the northern area, mainly northwest, Tobias covers 22 counties and provides direct services with people with hearing loss. And they're one-on-ones, he goes right to their place. And we're supposed to have about 20, 25 clients, and we're seeing in English and then also other languages. So with help of other people in the department. On Wednesday, the next day, May 17th, I had my monthly meeting for the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County at the Yum Com Center. We had staff reports and went through our financial parts, all in good order. Most of our business, unfinished business, was our upcoming annual meeting. It'll take place on June 1st, finishing up the final details of that. And then also on this board, we have two people that were serving for their, on their last, as their last meeting on the board. So I wanna thank Gloria Lee for 16 years of service and Jean Frim for 18 years of service, a long time on the board. And so they gave comments and a little bit about their past and where, and how far the Historical and Cultural Society has come over the years of their service. Also, I'd like to mention another man coming up through our group is the Juneteenth event. And Juneteenth is on June 17th. However, the event is gonna be held on June 19th, and that'll be Monday from Saturday at 4 o'clock to, goes till 8 o'clock at night. The Juneteenth event will be held at the Yum Com Center. So please stop by if you can put that on your calendars and be part of that event. Then on Thursday morning, May 18th, I joined the Moore Business Association and its nonprofits group. We had local updates from the entities that are nonprofits that are part of that. And I had a good topic discussion about auctions and other ideas around fundraising events, and really good comments being made by quite a few people in that group. That was my actual committee work, kind of as follow-up. Two other things I attended on my own, just to get greater background. I had a metro cog orientation. It was very good, got in-depth, and got to meet our new executive officer, Ben Griffin, that has just started a couple of weeks back. So it's kinda getting his new perspective of things. And then it was mainly coordinated by Adam Altenberg, who's been on staff there for many, many years. And then last night, I attended the Place for Hope Open House. Good networking place to be that night and all the good work they do. And there was about 50, 60 people there, so it was nicely attended. That's what I have.
Yeah, I, last Tuesday, had the PIC committee, which Jenny reported on. I'd just like to add that Darren gave us a presentation on the Sick and Safe Time that's passing the committee that I think has passed now fully. It's gonna be signed into law, so it's, how it's gonna affect Clay County. Yesterday morning, DMV, Kevin already reported on that meeting. And then yesterday afternoon, the MRC meeting that Jenny gave a report on. If you need any more information on that, I'll go run home and get my notes on my table and bring them back. But we'll go with that, I guess.
I might need more notes.
Okay. Okay, those are my three meetings. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I also participated in the PIC meeting that's been discussed. That afternoon, I participated in a virtual regional city manager meeting. We talked about legislative impacts, budgets, and the impact of cannabis on the cities. On the, later that afternoon, we had a groundbreaking meeting with Jackie, Joe, Darren. We're working with representatives through GERTS. Again, that groundbreaking is gonna be May 31st at 1:30 PM at the site. On the 17th, I met with Abby Firkner from Fargo-Moorhead, West Fargo Chamber. Talked about their programming and also other update of how their funding requests are going to be starting this year. Currently, they're on a, by employee base, and they're moving to a tier format. With that format comes some additional perks. One reserved seat at the annual influencer breakfast, one reserved seat at the Ford Midwest Summits. We have one annual pass to eggs and issues, which, for all of them, which is a little challenging because they generally are on Tuesday mornings, but that's a possibility. And also some visibility on the Chamber website at different, various times throughout the year for one, as the county, and two, as the department. So that'd be about an $800 increase over their previous requests. We've, I talked, on the 18th, I talked with David Hayer from Deed about the Terracan and their needs for funding for the road on 70th Avenue. He was going out there to meet that day. I appreciate that conversation. On the 18th, we had MCCJPA pre-meeting, talked about acquisition updates, appraisal reports, and negotiation summary, land leases and task orders that will be addressed at our meeting on this coming Thursday. Yesterday, I participated in the pre-design meeting. Again, it's exciting to see the footprint, exterior design. And I think the goal, I think, was by the end of, end of June, to have an estimate for that, or a pre-estimate. Again, just a reminder that today, we'll have the press conference at 2:00 PM for EMT and Fire at Dilworth Community Center Fire Department. Other reminders, we won't, we do not have board next week because it's the fifth Tuesday. And so we're conclosed, we'll also be closed Memorial Day on the 29th. And then just a quick update, we did, in opioid discussion, we did get, we received various funding through different settlements. Janssen, the distributors, Mallencroft, and also recently, we signed on with Teva, Walgreens, Walmart, and a couple other different things. We did receive our notification for our opioid funding through the distributors, and that's going to be another $71,063.09, which is the exact amount that we received last year. And so we have not received information on what the Walmart-Walgreens settlement is, but we should be hearing that here in the coming months. And that concludes my report.
Brian, you got something for us? Okay. Jackie? One of these days, you'll give us a report. Okay. All right. Your turn.